Yes, it has.
We can all rise with pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Baughn here. Mr. Bichada.
Here.
Mrs. Bruno Riculia.
Here.
Mr. Sayak.
Here.
Mrs. Esposito.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Mackinow.
Present.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
And Mr. Backo.
Here.
Presentations on the phone.
Yes, I will do the Teachers of the Year and the ESPs of the Year, the Educational Support Professionals, first. I will call up the board member who will read a little blurb on the individual, and then would the individual also come up? Alright, the first person to come up is Mary Ellen Hen from Arlington. Hi, she's a student of Arlington. And the board member that is going to make that presentation is Mr. Bichada, who is saying hello to me. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm the lucky one to get to start first. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mary Ellen Hen, responsibility begins each morning as she meets the students as they come off their buses with a friendly cheerful smile and greeting. This day, this begins their day on a positive note which is so important for the children she works with each day. Throughout the day, Mrs. Hen does a supportive part of the learning experience. She constantly reinforces the skills that are taught in the classroom and will sit one-on-one with the student until a skill is mastered. The students love to share their success with Mrs. Hen. The students are never allowed to give up. Say that they can't do it when Mrs. Hen is there. She finds a way to make them feel better and show them that they can do it. Mary Ellen often knows exactly what is needed in a classroom without constant instruction from the teacher. Her classroom management skills are second nature to her, and the training in the positive behavioral support has been such an asset to working with our special needs students. At Arlington School, Mrs. Hen is held in a very high regard by all. Congratulations. Mary Ellen? Come on, you gotta take a picture. Be careful in the court. Congratulations, thank you. Next on the list is Sandy Jacko, paraprofessional from Eisenhower. And the board member that will say that is Mr. Joe Trapp. Not here, but you can make, you can make it up. Wait, you really, you really made it big? Okay.
Mrs. Sandra Sandy Jacko has been a paraprofessional in Saverville for 27 years. Mrs. Jacko performs classroom delegated duties with an exceptional level of expertise. She is knowledgeable of the emotional, social, and physical disabilities of the students to which she is assigned. Sandy always anticipates classroom needs and prepares material accordingly. She adds a dimension of enjoyment to each day and is always pleasant and full of good cheer. Mrs. Jacko enjoys a personal relationship of responsibility and caring with disabled students assigned to her care. She accompanies students to the lunchroom, special subject areas, lavatories, playground, assembly, and buses. She has tremendous empathy for every student which is demonstrated in the way she interacts with them. Sandy provides our students with personal attention and assistance they need making school more enjoyable for them as a result of her presence. Sandra Jacko is a remarkable person and a very valuable member of the Eisenhower staff.
I'll ask Mr. Bichada to come up again. Next person on the list is Lorraine Galanti, cafeteria worker. My second chance tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Lorraine Galanti has done an outstanding job in her role as a cafeteria worker for 18 years in the Saverville Public School District, all at Harriet S. Truman School. The credibility, dedication, and competence are the hallmarks of the manner in which she performs her job that Truman students respect and appreciate and adore her because they know Mrs. Galanti has their best interests at heart from the manner in which she performs her responsibilities. Lorraine's passion for her profession has earned her the respect and admiration of all who have had the pleasure of interacting or working with her. Her talent, support, and devotion are greatly appreciated, and her services make a difference in regard to the success of Truman School. She is most deserving of this honorable award. Congratulations. Got a picture with that? It's a slow pattern. Congratulations. Next on the list is Karen Havens, Secretary for Promotions.
Mrs. Karen Havens is an asset to the Wilson School Office. She is highly organized, efficient, and exhibits a conscientious, positive work ethic. Karen consistently overextends herself in every activity in which she is involved. Her personality, ability, and innate integrity make her a perfect match for the office and school staff. Mrs. Havens is able to think beyond the task and to troubleshoot problems. She is very much a part of the staff and gives unstintingly of her time in support of their efforts as well as those of her children. Congratulations.
Okay, next on the list is Victoria Pars from, paraprofessional from the upper elementary school. Mr. DePinto will be making the statement.
Mrs. Victoria Vicky Pars is a paraprofessional in Project Before. It takes special dedication to be a preschool paraprofessional in a setting where some students have not yet acquired spoken language, may still be in diapers, and are just beginning the routine of coming to school. Some days, not so willingly. She assists their teacher with engaging them in circle time or other activities, encouraging them to answer or prompting them to answer with a gesture if needed. Vicky knows each individual student and what motivates them. Ms. Vicky leads to them, plays with them, supports their learning, and gives them the tender loving care on which every preschooler thrives.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Next is the middle school paraprofessional, Dorothy Dunn. And to make that presentation is Mrs. Esposito. She's not here, just, I don't think Dottie's here, but we can make the presentation.
Mrs. Dorothy Dottie Dunn is a middle school paraprofessional who has been dedicated to the children of Saverville for the past 28 years. Throughout her years in the district, Mrs. Dunn has worked in the middle school and the high school. She is committed to her students and is always willing to lend a helping hand. Dottie is a true team player, and her expertise in her role as a special education paraprofessional enables the teacher to provide the highest level of quality instruction. Caring and compassion coupled with a wonderful sense of humor makes Dottie Dunn ESP of the Year.
Congratulations. Next on the list, Mr. Mackinow will make the presentation to Maritza Morales, paraprofessional.
Okay, well, ESP of the Year for the high school. What her supervisors have to say about her is Ms. Maritza Morales' positive attitude and dedication to her students has been critical to the success of the special education programs at the high school. She assists in the classroom to reteach new concepts or gives assistance on the project. Maritza has worked alongside her students to support their emerging skills at Alex Lemonade Stand and concession stands at step competitions. She pushes students towards independence and encourages them to build the confidence that they need to do things for themselves. All teachers and students have come to rely on Maritza to be an involved, caring, and competent paraprofessional who works to make every day and everyone the best they can be.
And finally, the last ESP is Ms. Susan Kaprowski, Secretary from Slumber School. My favorite early morning person.
Ms. Susan Sue Kaprowski has been an outstanding asset to the business office. Dependability, dedication, and competence are words that best describe how she performs her job. Sue has the respect of the administration and staff when dealing with her knowledge of health benefits and related health issues. The staff knows that Mrs. Kaprowski has their best interests at heart from the manner in which she performs her duties. Sue's support and dedication are greatly appreciated which makes a great difference in the performance of the business office. She is so deserving of such a prestigious award.
I ask all the ESPs to please come up, Sue, stay up. And we want to take one picture together, everybody. Come on up. You may open it up. If you can bring it up. They won't see your name, if we only have one, that'd be good. Oh, don't, don't. Lucy, Lucy, Lucy. No touch. Come over here, we'll come up, we'll move up. No touch. That's how the cafeteria ladies will tell me, no touch. Got to squish it a little? Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Okay, next, we will now start with the Teachers of the Year. And to make the first presentation is President Miss Backo and Kelly Whitley, Grade One Teacher from Arlington School.
Ms. Kelly Whitley is a kindergarten and first grade self-contained teacher who gives each of the students in her classroom the individual attention her students need and crave. Ms. Whitley takes the time to get to know them on a personal level so she can relate to each of them in different ways. One can see her clapping her hands or jumping up and down with pride when a student has learned a new skill or accomplished something the student has been working so hard to achieve. Students in our classroom succeed because of her skills. Kelly has had some very unique and challenging behaviors to deal with during her 18 years teaching in Saverville. She is well-versed in ABA techniques and has worked closely with the district's behaviorists. Whether it is teaching a whole class lesson, a SMARTboard, or working one-on-one with a student, Mrs. Whitley is deeply committed to never stop trying to get the best out of her students. Congratulations.
You get it? Thank you. Okay, number two, Lori McLafferty from Eisenhower School, kindergarten teacher.
Ms. Lori McLafferty has been a kindergarten teacher at Eisenhower School for 15 years. During that time, she has inspired her students to achieve a wonderful success. Lori generally enjoys her students. She is thorough in her communication with parents, keeping them abreast of all that is happening in her class and the progress of their children. Lori utilizes all the elements of good instruction necessary for the success of her students. As a planner, instructor, decision-maker, Lori performs at an excellent level. Her lesson structure is appropriate for good instruction acquisition and retention of information. She exhibits excellent classroom management skills and techniques. Lori truly embodies the qualities necessary with the title Teacher of the Year.
You got it? Okay. Okay, next on the list, Lisa Sapo, Truman School, Special Ed Teacher. And to make this presentation is Mr. Sayak.
Mrs. Lisa Sapo has enthusiastically taught special education for 12 years in the Saverville Public School District and is presently working at Truman School as a third-grade inclusion teacher. Mrs. Sapo is a gifted and talented teacher who creates a learning environment that is exciting, child-centered, and responsive to the academic, social, and emotional needs of her special education and mainstream students. Her lessons demonstrate her excitement and enthusiasm for teaching by providing the children with a solid skills background, challenging them to think, promoting their interest and love of learning, and encouraging them to be the best that they can be. Lisa is a gentle, kind individual and an exceptional educator who exemplifies the true meaning of a professional. Congratulations, congratulations to a person most deserving of this great honor.
Next on the list, which Harold Bruno Riculia will address, Adrian Vissoni, Wilson School, Grade Three Teacher.
Mrs. Adrian Visson is an outstanding teacher who consistently sets high expectations for all of her students in all areas, including academics, social skills, and citizenship. This reflects the high expectation she sets for herself as an educator. Adrian teaches a child-centered, Grade Three inclusion class where she sets the achievement bar high and requires that students actively participate. Her expectations are reflective of the life skills necessary to achievement in the working world. Ms. Visson's exciting classroom is a model for what is good in education. Congratulations.
Okay, next, Ms. Trapp will make the presentation to the librarian at the UES, Mary Desmond.
Mrs. Mary Desmond is very approachable and eager to assist her colleagues in planning and implementation of cross-curricular projects, often creating min-lessons to coincide with the teacher's current focus on the classroom. Each lesson is engaging and on the cutting edge of technology. Mrs. Desmond works with students of all abilities, keeping them excited and engaged in their learning. Mary plays a vital role not only in our school but in our community. She coordinated meetings with the senior citizens of the town who share significant events of local history with the students. She provides a bridge between the community and the school. Congratulations.
You're in the middle, ma'am. You're in the middle. You get it? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Joe. Next on the list is Ms. Cleary, Tara Cleary, from the Middle School, Special Education Teacher. And Mr. Esposito will make his presentation.
Ms. Tara Cleary, currently a teacher in the Middle School Achievement Program, is a dynamic educator who is committed to assisting students to reach their social, emotional, and academic potential. Tara embodies the philosophy, spirit, and vision that reflects the goals and expectations of this highly specialized educational program that serves the needs of behaviorally challenged and disaffected students. Ms. Cleary possesses the unique ability to balance caring and compassion with high academic and behavioral expectations. As a result, students who had been caught in a cycle of failure have flourished and achieved. Many of her students have now made the honor roll for the first time in their academic career, making it evidently clear to all that Ms. Cleary's students truly do achieve. Congratulations.
Okay, last but not least, Keith Mahoney from the high school, Language Arts Teacher, and Mike Mackinow will make that presentation.
Ladies and gentlemen, Teacher of the Year from the high school. Very competitive faculty, but Keith has been in the district since 2004, teaching language arts, and also you're the coordinator of the Credit Recovery and Alternate Education Program as well in the high school. But as most of you know, Keith is also the head freshman football coach. And he has the ability on and off the field to mentor and be a great role model in and outside the classroom. And I can tell you, I watched this gentleman coach, and I can tell you that he epitomizes what every athlete in Saverville knows, and that's commitment and character. And I'm very proud to announce him as Teacher of the Year for the high school.
If I could, Keith, stay right here. All the Teachers of the Year, please come up. One more picture. One more picture. Guys, we've got to, I know we're gonna have to like squeeze in. Move up a little more, please, so we can get everybody in. That's okay. I got a little out of leg. You guys might have to move back a little. You get it? You get it? Thank you very much. I just wanted to congratulate all the Teachers and ESPs of the Year. It truly is an outstanding district, and those are our greatest and the best. God bless. Good job. After we're through, we're going to have our second presentation. I'm going to ask Mr. Byrne and his crew to come on up. And we'll have a nice presentation on the safety patrol. Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
Thank you very much, members of the Board of Education. We have a few technical things we need to take care of here first, but we're very pleased and honored this evening to be able to present to you our Arlington School Safety Patrol. And they, along with Mrs. Goiney and myself, have prepared a SMARTboard presentation for you as well as the general public in terms of talking about what we're doing at Arlington in terms of our safety patrol, as well as, we're very pleased to share with you that we won a competitive grant. We were one of 10 schools in the entire United States to win this grant. And so, our safety patrollers are going to be able to share that with you this evening. Alright, as you can see, they're very excited, and they're looking forward to this with great anticipation. But we just need to align our SMARTboard, and they'll be ready to go to share with you what all the wonderful things we're doing at Arlington in terms of our safety patrol as well. Now I have the pleasure of presenting to the captain of our safety patrol, Captain Laura Garnett, as well as one of our lieutenants, Eliza David.
Hi, I'm Laura Garnett, and I'm the captain of the safety patrol.
Hi, I'm Eliza David, and I'm the lieutenant of the safety patrol. I saw from Gabriel Costa.
First, you would like to talk about captain's duty. My duties are to take attendance, and when I'm doing that, Lieutenant Gabe is taking lunch again. Also, I discuss with Mr. Byrne, Eliza, and Gabe about if we're going in or outside the patrol today. Data collection. Data collection is when you write down when a kid has a problem with something, and you use tally marks to show what problems we had. And then we go in a meeting, and we compare our data with other safety patrols, and with Mr. Byrne. Narnie. Narnie has a small closet in the office where we keep our ballots, data papers, and flipboards. Sometimes when I go in there, I catch it going into a different world. And then when I come out, I scare T-shirt views who would think that I would be in there. Review the day. We review the day through data collection because we know some days will be busier than others. We inside or out. Mr. Byrne, captain, Mr. Byrne, the captain, Lieutenant Gabe, and I decide a fleet patrol, inside or out by the weather conditions. Patrol, we patrol if we are inside or out, like I just explained, and make sure the students are following directions. Student safety, we make sure students put safety first instead of violence.
Hi, my name is Luca Vettiselli.
And my name is Alex Caspar.
Make sure that children are safe in the hallways. One way we make sure kids are safe in the hallways, by if their shoes aren't tied, we stop them until they tie their shoes, or... Or if they're running in the hallways, we tell them, "No, stop."
Collect data. We collect data to mark down if the children are doing bad or good. Safety first. Safety first is, safety first, if we, um, safety first. Safety first is when we tell them to stop what they're doing if it's dangerous or whatnot.
Here we have a picture of when the representative from the National AA AAA Association came to Arlo School. And we also have, in this picture, two officers from the Sable Police Department that the police chief sent in regard to supporting our safety programs. We also have councilman who presented to the Arlo School with a certificate of recognition from the mayor and the borough council in terms of our winning this award. Obviously, the significance of this is the fact that we were just one of ten schools in the entire United States to win this, and we were the first state ever, rather than the first school ever in the state of New Jersey to win this award. Now, as a principal, I get to brag. And so, one of the great things about this, to me, is far beyond those statistics we just gave you, is that the twelve students that we have up in front of you this evening are one of five hundred and seventy-five thousand Safety Patrolers in the entire United States. And they sat with me, and we wrote a grant that was competitively awarded to us in comparison to all other Safety Patrolers in the entire United States. So I think the message that sends to those students and to our school is absolutely incredible in terms of what they're gonna be able to accomplish in the future.
Creating data. Creating DVDs. Creating DVDs, we create DVDs for next year for the Safety Patrols next year. Data collection is when we observe and rate now the child's behavior. Safety issues is when the children do not, like, do not follow our five directions if we're telling them what they should be doing, what they should not be doing. Mentoring. We will mentor the second graders to Safety Patrol around other kids. First, we will teach them the objective of Safety Patrol, which is helping the teacher maintain discipline in the school. First, we teach them the basic steps of Safety Patrol. If someone is running, what should the Safety Patrol say? They should say, "Stop running, or you will get hit." Next year, the third graders are going to create puppets to follow the Safety Patrol. Demonstrations. On the Arlo TV, we made skits and we acted them out on TV. Made skits and acted them out.
What we did with this program, and this is a sad part of this program for me, is you can see the amount of time and effort these third graders have put into this program. Now, unfortunately, they need to leave us in a couple of days. And so, what they've been doing is they've been mentoring the first crop of our second graders who will be involved in the Safety Patrol next year. You also heard them talk a lot about data. Now, you may say, gee, why are all these third graders talking about data? Well, first of all, what I was trying to teach them, obviously, was in terms of they need to make an informed decision based upon the observable information that they have. The only way to do that is to gather the data. I'm also thinking about, when they come here to high school and middle school and so forth, they're gonna need to be able to develop projects, and need to be able to synthesize and hypothesize about different things. They needed to be able to do that. What we've also done here is, we've talked a lot about what, obviously, was a very key initiative here at Arlo School, and that's writing. So, they did a little bit of writing this year, so they actually wrote their own skits. And at Arlo School, we have the benefit of having our own TV station, so they're able to project the entire school, modeling the appropriate behavior that will be found not only on the playground, arrival and dismissal, but also on the buses and so forth. So, again, we've gotten involved in terms of writing. Study skills, obviously, are evident here in terms of what we're teaching now. Now, incorporating all that is that I have this, I have my thing here, which is Microsoft Project. So I have lots of different ideas in terms of how I'm gonna use Microsoft Project. So we're going to simplify that and teach our Safety Patrolers next year a thing about Microsoft Project to be able to look at how to develop an idea from beginning to the end. So, we're very, very pleased, and we thank you very, very much for this time to be able to present this to you. And a very nice round of applause for our Safety Patrol. They had a few squirrels in their stomachs beforehand, so they were a little nervous, but they did very well, I think. Thank you. I could ask all of our Safety Patrolers to come on up. Mrs. Gray is gonna take our picture. You have to know, Mrs. Gray, she's gonna be your vice principal next year. Smile for her.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Motion to accept. Minutes, motion to approve the minutes of the regular executive session of June 7th.
Motion to accept. Mr. Baughn?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno Riccioli?
Yes.
Mr. DeBento?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. McEnroe?
Yes.
And Mr. Park? Yes. Mr. Kylek? Yes, they are for Mr. Kylek. They're through this time as the school year starts to wind down. Say Warmore High School Transition Students collaborated with the Ross City Baseball Team to raise over six hundred dollars for Alex Lemonade Stand, an organization that provides direct support to children with cancer and their families. They built a lemonade stand and sold lemonade at every home baseball game this season. They learned organization, business, and social skills. Mrs. Sheila Berman and her transition students, Coach Lukowski and his team, and their partners who celebrate the end of the season and their teamwork on Alex Lemonade Stand. Thank you for all the students and staff involved, and to all the fans who are steady customers. See you next season. On April 16, 2011, the Saywar Warmore High School Indoor Drum Line, consisting of middle school and high school drummers, performed at the 2011 USSBA State Indoor Drum Line Competition at the Trenton Sun Island. The students performed their show, "Don't Fear the Reaper," and won their classification with a score of eight nine point nine. This score gave the team the title of New Jersey State Standstill Champions 2011. Congratulations to the drummers and the staff, and this outstanding achievement. That concludes the highlights, Madam President. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President. Building grounds, no report. Moving to page three, finance. First twelve resolutions are the same. Number thirteen is our substitute rates, which is on page four, which start from eighty and go up to two hundred and thirty dollars per day. The rates of also on fourteen are substitute rates for non-certificated. Number fifteen is the Wilson School Electrical Upgrades, Security System Installation. There's a rejection of two bids on seventeen and eighteen for buses. Number nineteen is an abolishment of a class, and that's just, when you see abolishment of a class and an addition of a class, what we're doing, that's for our, what do you call that? Our position control, which I always forget. So that's just to make sure that we just keep track of our internal controls. So that's really not that we're getting rid of it, we're just moving one class from one section to another. So, with that being said, the commission, non-public chapter one ninety-two, one and three services, we're contracting them for that. Computer solutions, we're contracting them for our budget, personnel, and payroll packages. We will also be, again, contracting the commission for educational cooperative pricing, as we have done in the past. Number twenty-five are the state rates for the different grade levels, and this comes right from the state on page six. This is cooperative visits, education, students that will be working in our school district next year. Any questions with section B?
I have a question. So, about seventeen and eighteen on page four, with the buses, can you tell me a little about that?
When we went out to bid, we built the bus specifications, and when the numbers came in, after sitting with the transportation director and also the bus mechanic, we both, we collectively felt the numbers were slightly inflated because there was no competition for the type of bus that we put out. So we're gonna redo the bid specs. We're possibly gonna look at educate Middlesex Regional as part of their cooperative, they have buses, to see if we can develop it through there. The numbers just didn't seem right, and we were all in agreement that we may have built the specs a little too tight to limit the amount of competition out there.
Thank you.
Dr. O'Fannin, on that same topic, I know that there's a bill moving through the legislature which would extend the useful life of buses, and I know that we sometimes fall into that. Have you been following that bill, and are you watching that in conjunction with this bid?
We're watching it, but unfortunately, I have to go out to bid, so at this time, it would be under the current twelve-year term, since the bill hasn't passed, so we have to stay with the twelve-year. And there are some concerns. I do remember speaking with the mechanic a while ago. Fifteen years is a very long time to own a vehicle, and he has his, he has his concerns about keeping a vehicle on the road for twelve years.
All right, so these buses really need to be replaced, it's not just that we're replacing them?
No, we're at twelve years, we've hit our max, they get replaced.
Right, but they also really need to be replaced, it's not like we've got them?
Yes, but you're not allowed to keep them beyond the twelve years anyway.
But if the law were changed, it would be permitted, but you're telling me that we'd still?
We would probably look at that each individual bus at that point in time.
Got it. I also need to stand and check in the bill list for compare.
I'd like to clarify something, Dr. O'Fannin. For number twenty-five, and I think you just said, the tuition rates, the state sets that amount, and that's based on what we, what we, our per pupil spending?
Yeah, what happens is every year when you develop your budget, at the end of your budget development package, the state calculates based on your enrollment, the number of students enrolled in each category, your tuition rate in case you had a charge for a tuition rate student. We've used that in conjunction when we brought in some special ed students. So this is basically calculated based on a formula within the budget package.
Dr. O'Fannin, for Mr. Dandret? June 30th is fast approaching. Do you have preliminary numbers at the amount of reserve or surplus?
As we're finding, as we're finalizing the retro pay, I took a quick look before I did come over to the meeting. We currently sit about with three million dollars in surplus, as we sit today, but that was a quick look at about four thirty before I headed over to the meeting. So right now, we sit around three million dollars in surplus for this year.
Legally, can we allocate X amount of dollars into the capital reserve account for future projects?
We could, but at this point in time, I really haven't analyzed everything because with everything going on with the retro pay, I've been really concentrating on that. We posted it today, I haven't had a chance to analyze it, but there wouldn't be that much excess funds at this point in time to set aside.
Do you have a date for the audit yet?
No, I have not heard from the auditors at this point in time.
Could you call them and see if we came down on an early schedule?
I'd be more than happy to.
As a follow-up to Mr. Bishada's comment, if we do find that we have excess funds, can we still reserve them in July, or it must be done by June 30?
I believe it has to be done by June 30.
Then I would think that if we have excess funds, this board will be meeting next week to put them in capital reserve?
Again, I feel comfortable in stating, right now, we're not gonna have the amount of money in excess funds that I'm gonna warrant you at this point in time, but I really...
But should that situation occur? I think that we should, I don't wanna risk that we're going to have that money taken to offset the state's budget problem. We've got our own budget challenges here.
I understand that. Working with my office, we've been concentrating the last few weeks on getting everybody's payroll and retro checks out, so I really haven't had a chance to even sit with my staff to look at opening conferences and things of that nature. So, I give you a number today of three million after a quick post at four fifteen of the payroll, which I haven't really had a chance to look at.
Would it be possible to have a meeting with the Finance Committee before the June 30 deadline if we can come up with a number of that?
The only problem is I'm away next week.
Vacation?
Yes. I mean, if I had to, I would come back if there's a need, but I would have to look at the regs, and I don't recall them off the top as far as reserving, but I do recall from looking at them last year, I believe, it has to be done by June 30. I don't believe you can do it subsequent. But give me a chance to look at the regs tomorrow, I could be wrong in that.
Is there any money in capital reserve now, or did we, did we've exhausted all of that?
Okay, moving to section C, non-certified. The attachment is in the back. There are probably about seven hundred people for the 2010-11. Again, this is retro for this year, this is not next year's salaries, so just please be aware of that. And next month, we'll be doing the eleven-twelve. If I could, Dr. O'Fannin, as I said, we finalized it, and I make this comment, comment, if there are any questions or concerns that you receive, and please, please give us a call. We are not perfect, we probably have missed something, we probably have made a mistake somewhere along the line, so just please give the business office a call, and we will try and adjust it by the very end. Okay, there's also number two, a transfer, and there also is the appointment of cafeteria aides, bus aides, part-time secretary rate for two ten-eleven, again, this is ten-eleven, bus drivers for ten-eleven, cafeteria workers for ten-eleven. These are some professional days on page nine. There also is some employment card professionals in project B four, the extended school year. Mr. Combsberger will also be, again, the on-call person for emergencies. There are additional substitutes put on that list. Any questions with section C? With none, moving to D. I would like to personally thank Frank Schneider, I worked with Frank a few years. We're losing a real good guy, he's been here for thirty-four years, and I want to thank him for all his services, I'll truly miss him, but I got a feeling that he'll be back in the middle school substituting, like many of them are. So, I congratulate him, and hopefully, he has a healthy and happy, real long retirement. Resignation of a speech therapist, once again, attachment A is all the salaries for the two ten-eleven school year. Ms. Zeichler, I would like to congratulate Ms. Zeichler. She's our new assistant superintendent. At this time, I would like to thank...
And at this time, I would like to thank publicly, once again, the Sutherland for all our hard work and dedication for the past thirty-nine years at Saraval Public School. In the due, I would also like to thank Mr. Skoroski, I don't know if he's still here, but I want to thank him for his services as well, because he's also retiring, one of the administrative team, probably retiring also as of June thirtieth, and I want to thank him for all his hard work. Moving along, salaries of Mr. DeAndrea and Ms. Sutherland, the few months that he has left, with some retirement payments, I once again, I want to thank the Professional Development Committee, they've done a great job, one of the few districts that continually get outstanding honors from accounting, get approved on the first shot, which is unusual. Salary adjustments are, again, retroactively from the ten-eleven, these are all the people that put in salary adjustments, so we, like Mr. DeAndrea said, this is a very, very, very busy time of year, trying to get everything in. Coordinating activities at Wayne Hall, coordinating the activities of the co-op program and the marketing, and that's her stipend that she receives over the summer. This is some employment of professional teachers on Number Ten, summer employment of the child study team, this is a blanket resolution if stuff needs additional people over the summer. These are our lab assistants, which is on Page Thirteen, and again, a short substitute list for next year and this year. Any questions?
Dr. Alfan, on that too, the resignation of Laura Metzolidis, she faxed over something this afternoon, changing that date to the thirty-first so she can provide E.S.Y. speech services for us.
Okay, so, so when is she retiring? I mean, resigned?
She's resigning August thirty-first, so there's a change of date there.
I'll make that change.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to Section E, I have a change in Number One, to the policy, the resolutions agreed, the Board of Education's request to waive the two readings requirement contained in Board Bylaw Ninety-three, Ninety-three, Twelve, Formulation, Adoption Amendment of Bylaws with respect to the Board's consideration of an amendment to the Board Policy Fifty-One Twenty-Seven Commencement Activities, and two, to adopt the previously submitted proposed amendment to Board Policy Fifty-One Twenty-Seven, Commencement Activities on the first reading. And the policy is listed as such, there was only a few corrections to that policy. Any questions to that? Can we wait till we leave? The report is done, or you want to do it?
I think we'll do it right now with the, with the policy.
Can we ask what those corrections were first? Which ones specifically, what's specifically changed?
I'll adjust it, it was my policy. Okay. Okay.
Sure.
When I was first elected president, when I had reached out to the attorney, and I had asked him, we have a policy that currently states that the board president awards the diplomas at graduation, dah dah dah. So I reached out to the attorney, and I asked him if it was okay if the building principal handed out the diplomas instead of the board president. I felt that the building principal has much more with the right relationship with the students. I know other schools do do it, I spoke to the attorney, I spoke to Mr. Brown, I spoke to the vice president, I spoke to the superintendent. There was no problem. I believed after speaking to the attorney, that since it said the board president was responsible for doing it, that it wasn't going to be a problem. I sent down a notice to the board, and I had one board member who firmly objected to the building principal doing it as opposed to me or another board member. So in, I guess, trying to come to an agreement or consensus, because the disagreement was over the exact wording of the policy, which sometimes we get into, as you know, when we deal with lawyers, the word awarding was interpreted by our board attorney as it was okay, that I did, the awarding didn't necessarily mean I had to physically hand out the diplomas. That's how he interpreted, said it wasn't a problem. One of the board members took issue with it, so I thought the best way to do it would be to clarify the policy as opposed to just letting it go like that. So this was the way the board attorney had restructured it, and if you look at, it's really at the bottom where the changes, and my initial take was to have the building principal hand it out. After speaking to the attorney, he brought up some other ideas, well, rather than limit it to the building principal, suppose for example, you had, per se, a war hero that returned to Saraval, and maybe the board would like them to hand out the diplomas as opposed to a board member or the building principal, it sort of left it more discretion as to what the board was, so that was written by the board attorney that way. So I will let Kevin have his speak, since he objects to it.
So the one change is the first, the president of the Board of Education, or his or her designee, shall distribute, that's the...
Right, the change is distribute as opposed to award.
Okay.
That's where the change is, since there was an argument over what the word was supposed to mean.
Thank you.
Under remarks and comments, I have many, and I have handouts for both the board and the public, so if you could pass these down to the chair, please. I'll leave, you got a lot to put it out to the public.
Mrs. Backo clarified the reason, or at least her reasoning for the change, and I have many objections, not the least of which is cosmetic or a vagueness of the original wording. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our seventieth annual commencement, and what I'm going to share with you tonight, I intend to demonstrate that there's no evidence that exists that for the last sixty-nine board presidents that have served this board, there was any vagueness in the language of what the word award means. I also have an issue with the process under which this policy made it to the agenda this evening, and the issue that I have is that typically when a board member, any board member, whether it's the board president, myself, or even our newest board member, Mrs. DeBento, which is to make the policy change, we bring it up to the board for discussion, the policy then goes to the policy committee for discussion, a recommendation comes back to the board, and it's heard at two meetings, so that the public has ample opportunity to cognizance. That was not being done in this case, it's being rushed through the process, it never saw the policy committee, it was all done between Mrs. Backo, Dr. Alfan, I'm assuming was involved, and the attorney. And the problem with that is, you know, when you get wording like the board president or his or her designee, it leaves open to a future board president whom we don't know to allow anyone to present high school diplomas. I mean, Mrs. Backo cited a very noble cause, but there's nothing to stop a future board president from flying his or her mother in from Ohio to present diplomas to the students because his or her mother happens to be dying, and he or she thinks that it's the best thing to do. So the language that it's proposed right now is extremely vague. But beyond that, before we change a tradition, which as I indicated spans sixty-nine years of having a board member confer diploma, I think we need to look back at history. And when you look back at history, I've got a document in there on Page Two which cites the origins of the high school diploma. In Middletown, Connecticut, it seems that research dictates that the first high school was formed out of the Connecticut Law of Seventeen-Ninety-Eight governing public high schools. And on September twenty-nine, eighteen forty-six, the Middletown, Connecticut School Committee, their Board of Education, voted that a committee be appointed by this board to make out a course of study to be purchased in high schools. Then on October seventh, eighteen forty-eight, it was voted that a subcommittee to be appointed on the subject of granting diplomas and preparing a course of study, and three men were appointed to that subcommittee. On November twenty-fifth, eighteen forty-eight, the Board of Education voted that several textbooks now in use or heretofore approved by the committee in the two departments of the high school shall continue to be used as textbooks until others are substituted by the committee. Diplomas shall be given at the end of the present term, and of each term thereafter to such of the pupils in the two departments of the high schools as shall have pursued and completed in a credible manner the full course of study prescribed by the committee, and shall maintain the satisfactory deportment as pupils obedient to the rules of the school. And it outlined the course of study, exactly the same things that local school boards do today throughout this entire country. And evidence that diplomas were regularly granted is found in the fact that the Middletown School Committee reported in eighteen fifty-two that a public exhibition was given at the end of the winter term, and diplomas were awarded to three young ladies meeting those requirements, the first commencement ceremony to be held in the United States. Ladies and gentlemen, it was a school board that did all this, it wasn't a principal, it wasn't a superintendent, it wasn't an attorney, a school board sat down, had high aspirations for their community's youth, developed a course of study, and said, hey, we want to recognize our students for completing this course of study, and we want to, we want to recognize them with a diploma. But as I said, you know, Middletown, Connecticut is a far ways from Saraval, New Jersey, but our history dates back to nineteen forty-two, we got somewhat of a later start. And in your handouts, you'll see a program from the nineteen forty-two commencement, and that was the first commencement ceremony held, and I know that because the program, which I obtained from the Saraval Historical Society, says it was the first commencement held. And if you look at that first commencement program, you'll see a young man named Board President Robert McCutcheon, who handed out the first diplomas at the first commencement of the Saraval Public Schools. It was a board member. And you'll see the tenth anniversary commencement, and you'll see the fifteenth anniversary commencement, and you'll see that every single one of them has a board member handing out diplomas. And if you go to the Saraval Historical Society, you can find these same items that I found. But in addition to that, I also used primary sources, live accounts, people who were there. I spoke to Dr. Parnell, I spoke to Mr. Bauer, I spoke to Mr. Cowan, a former board president who's in the back, I spoke to Mr. DePaulo, a former board president who's in the back. Mrs. Klubach, I exchanged emails with. Several primary sources, Mrs. Bowman, Mrs. Sutherland, Ms. Netzola, none of them could ever recollect time in which any one other than a Board of Education member presented diplomas to the graduating students. But that's not all, it's not only about tradition, it's about what the diploma represents. Ladies and gentlemen, to have Mr. Brown present a diploma, although I have great respect for Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown is the spokesperson and the leader for our high school, grades nine to twelve. Before, when we had the president presenting the diploma, it represented the district and the community. By delegating this to Mr. Brown, we delegate or relegate the significance of the high school diploma to nine-to-twelve education. Mrs. Brady, that means your contribution is no longer relevant. Mr. Byrne, yours isn't either, because it's all about nine-to-twelve. I think that what we do here in Saraval is greater than nine-to-twelve, it's K-to-twelve. Every teacher, every bus driver, every nurse, every principal matters in this process, and the board matters in this process. But further than that, the community matters in this process. At last year's commencement, Vice President of the Board of Education, Pat Lambold, presented a diploma to a young man named Jake Worden. That young man is an Eagle Scout. Do you think that maybe the scout leader had something to do into making that young man who he is? The Cub Scout leader, the den mother, his parents, his pastor? As board members, we represent that entire educational community, just as Robert McCutcheon did in nineteen forty-two, and just as the board did back in eighteen fifty. This is a significant change. We're always talking about, how do we get, we want parents involved, parents should take a greater interest in their children. This is about recognizing that it takes a village to get our children from kindergarten all the way up to high school and graduating through twelfth grade, and we as board members are the educational leaders of that village. Mr. Mackenone asked me a great question when he and I were discussing this, what do other districts do? So I did some research, which you'll also find in your packets, and you'll discover that in this state, I surveyed thirty-nine districts, and just so you know, this was a controlled sample. I limited it to districts within our county who responded to me, and members of the Board of Directors of the New Jersey School Boards Association, because I didn't want anyone to say that I picked a certain sample that would give me a certain result. I have no control over who gets elected from the twenty-one counties to the Board of Directors of New Jersey School Boards. And as you can see from those results, thirty-five of the thirty-nine districts surveyed, almost ninety percent all have their board doing it. Now certainly, I also gleaned some better practices from this exercise that we don't do. Some involve, in addition to their board, the superintendent. Some have all nine board members shaking hands. These are all things we can certainly look at, but it's the board's responsibility, it's the board's privilege, and the board's honor to award that high school diploma. But that's just New Jersey, what about our country? I contacted my colleagues at the National School Boards Association, and when I spoke to them, of the twenty members of the board, I believe there were fifteen who responded, fourteen of them all said across this country that the Board of Education awards the diplomas. But beyond that, I not only asked them, what do you do? Beyond that, some of them felt that they should also give me commentary. And on the last page of your handouts, you'll find the opinion of board members across the state and across the nation. For example, Ed Massey from Boone County School District in Kentucky, it seems absurd to me that a policy is needed, historical practice and tradition should prevail, the culmination of success is why we are board members. Dr. Leon Kaplan, closer to home from Lawrence Township, strange action, handing out diplomas is one of the great joys of being board president. Community members usually hear from board members when we want their money. I believe it is good for the community to see board members at events like graduations. High school graduation is more than a high school event, it is the culmination of a district's thirteen-year investment of time and money. If Mrs. Backo does not wish to hand out diplomas, I don't have an issue with that, but don't take a privilege and an honor that has belonged to this Board of Education for sixty-nine years away, because ladies and gentlemen, this is part of our history, this is part of our community, and if we let it go for just one commencement, it's gone forever. We can't come back in the July meeting and say, we made a mistake, it's gone forever. The chain is broken, the link is broken, and as a past president of this board, it's an honor to be a part of the chain of board presidents and vice presidents and board members since nineteen forty-two who have proudly stood out at commencement, handed our students our diplomas, and wished them good luck, Godspeed, God bless, and best success in your future, wherever it may take you. Based upon all of these comments, I make a motion, this policy be referred to the policy committee for further discussion based upon the significance of this change.
I would like to respond.
Mrs. Backo, as a matter of protocol, he made a motion, if any, you should allow someone, they want to second it, because he didn't make a motion.
Okay, so what's the motion?
The motion is to refer this policy to the policy committee for the proper review.
Okay, I'll second it. Now we can have discussion.
First of all, I'd like to reply, we continually and more frequently than not waive first readings on many policies, and I do agree with you with the language being vague, because this wasn't the exact language I wanted. I wanted it to be the board president or the building principal. It wasn't the suggestion of the attorney that I let it go. I, I don't think any board president would grab anybody off the street to give diplomas, but I have no problem changing it to the building principal. I don't dispute that former, I have no dispute that former board presidents did this, and I understood that it was a tradition. It was, and I see that you, you got opinions, you all bored people, there were no opinions from what maybe the students want or what the parents want, and to say that Mrs. Brady or Mr. Byrne is not relevant in the education because a board member's not handing out the diploma, I think it just, is just ridiculous. I mean, the fact that Mr. Brown is handing a piece of paper to someone, which is not even a right, that's just a privilege, the whole thing, it's really just a ceremony, and the education belongs to the student from all their teachers, not just Mr. Brown, but they are leaving that school, and that's the school they are graduating from. I believe that Mr. Brown has that connection to the kids, I don't think the board has a connection to the kids, but I'm sure in eighteen forty-two, when the town was smaller, maybe all the students knew the board. I, I just thought it gave it a much personal feeling to the kids, I thought it was more homey for the building principal. I'm not looking to take away the privilege of any future board president. If any board president in the future wishes to do it, I wasn't taking that from them. And I don't think this policy does that.
Mrs. Backo, we have two different things going on here at this.
Mrs. Backo, we have two different things going on here at this. We have a ceremony tomorrow night where Mr. Scatary reads, Mrs. Jakubic, Ms. Jakubic gives out the diplomas. I don't see the significance for a member of the board to be handing diplomas to the students that we really don't even know, to be perfectly honest with you. Mr. Brown has been their mentor for four years here at the high school. The wording, as you've read it, awarding, by you signing the diploma, you're awarding, as the board president, the diplomas to the students that are graduating. The handing of a, it's actually a blank caveat, whatever you want to call it, with the diploma that's handed out later, to me, it's just a ceremony. I don't see any significance to it.
Does anyone else have a comment?
It's not in the packet.
Most students get them after, or just get them that night.
Whatever.
So, at the high school, they get them that night?
Yes.
Would anybody else like to comment?
I'd just like to comment that I brought this up to my daughter, who's in high school. And I asked her, she knew Mrs. Backo and she did not. She does know Mr. Brown, and her opinion is that she'd like to see someone that she was familiar with. And the idea of possibly a student council, or really including the students also, calling the names out was a good idea also.
Rather than a designate, well, I think that maybe it should go to policy, for policy to discuss it. But rather than a designate, what about a board member? Which, it doesn't have to be the board president, but a board member to hand them out. Doesn't the administration announce the names anyway?
Yes.
Administration announces the names, so they memorialize the person getting their certificate, their diploma. But a board member to shake hands and actually hand it to them.
What if Mr. Brown's in it with a board member? To satisfy everybody?
I would have no objection to that.
Right, well, Mr. Brown reads the, he reads the names.
Right, but if Mr. Brown handed out the diploma to somebody else, would it be a name? There would be someone else.
And I don't think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And I think Mr. Brown does such a wonderful job with all those unique names, that I would like to see him just continue to do that. And as Helen said, and that memorializes his impact with the students. I agree that it should stay within the board, and if the board president wants to assign somebody else or request somebody else from the board to do that, I think that that would be a nice compromise.
So you think the building principal should not hand out the diplomas?
Correct. Call out the names, and that's his relationship with the student.
Which is what he did last year.
I feel like I'm in the middle of this.
You are?
I'm torn here. First, I want to say that Mr. Sayak, this is typical Ken Sayak, well-researched, a cogent argument. I became board president in two thousand and six, and did that for five and a second years. The first year that I was elected, Jim sent me a letter saying, welcome to the graduation, you hand out diplomas with the vice president. I immediately approached Jim, and just out of curiosity, I said, Jim, how come you're not doing it? And I felt that, you know, I was distant from the kids. He said, well, Mr. Mackinon, as I like to call the names, it's always been tradition, it's nice effect. So I went ahead and did it. The second year, I approached him again, he said, you know, it's tradition, this is what we do here, I call the names. And, you know, Jim being a big guy and everything, I said, okay. Being on the board, especially in the position of president, which is Mrs. Backo will find out, you get beat up a lot. And there's a lot of criticism, and you ask yourselves, why am I doing this? The vice often asks me, why are you running again? And my answer would always be, because I get to sign the diplomas and hand them out to the kids. To me, that was very rewarding. You put a lot of time in as a board member, as a board president, you put up with a lot of criticism. And this was an opportunity for me to say, you know, this is very rewarding to me, to hand out a diploma and shake that young person's hand. And certainly, as a father, I was very proud to sign my daughter's diplomas and hand them to them. That was something that I'll always remember. So I'm torn with this, you know. Mrs. Backo is certainly the president, and, you know, she has some authority to do this. But to my rest of my board members, if my memory serves me correctly, I remember being criticized when I proposed to the board, with several weeks in advance, that I was interested in a new law firm. And I got banged over the head by a lot of people, why are you doing this? And all of a sudden, you're thrown on this at the last minute, blah, blah, blah. And now we're talking about how we're going to do something two days from now. So I seize a little inconsistency with that. So, you know, how do I feel? I feel that Mrs. Backo, as president, is a proponent to do that. At the same time, I just heard a very cogent argument about why we should do that. And I'm always a person, I've always took pride in tradition. You know, I look at the names in here, and I look at other comments, I look at what other school districts do, and I say to myself, if something's not perfect, why fix it? And that's how I feel. So I'm really torn on this, on what I want to do.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, you're the president.
If, for example, I see that we have a lot of research, and we have people here that were placing the audience for this, and I didn't do any of that. If I were to bring fifty, a hundred students from the senior class who walked up and said, I really would really like to have my building principal hand me that diploma, would that matter to you? Or do you just feel this privilege of the board is more important? See, I sort of feel like this is what the students want, I think this is what the parents would be okay with. And I just feel that I was elected to serve them, not myself, to, that, oh gee, it's really nice for me to stand there. This isn't about me. This isn't about whether I want to stand up there and hand a piece of paper to students. This is about that I just felt that the building principal has that connection to the students, that we are very distant from. I just thought it would just be a nice gesture to have the building principal do it.
But that's a long question, Val, my answer will be a lot shorter. If the student said to me, I'm prepared for Mr. Brown to hand it out, by all means, I mean, that's why we're here, is for students. But in all the time that I've done, and I never had students say, Mr. Mackinon, why are you handing out the diplomas?
Well, did you ever ask?
No, I didn't, I didn't intend to ask, because I never thought that that would be a concern. You know, me as president, if Jim Brown said, Mr. Mackinon, I'd like to hand out the diplomas, Jim, go right ahead.
And I did ask Mr. Brown before I brought this any further. He was, you know, after the attorney, I did ask Mr. Brown first.
Look, I don't think you have any nefarious attempts here to do anything. You just have a personal preference that you prefer someone else to do, because you feel distant from the kids versus myself. And that's an argument that I understand too. So that's why I'm torn on what needs to do, but... I'll respond to Mrs. Backo's question with another analogy. If I was getting married in a civil ceremony in this community, I know Dr. Alfano much better than I do the mayor. And Dr. Alfano and I are a lot closer than I am to the mayor. However, despite the fact that I may want him to marry me, somehow I think the mayor is going to perform the service in the community.
But that analogy is, doesn't compare. You're talking about something that's legal. This isn't a legal matter, this is just a preference. There is a legal requirement for you to be married by a mayor or someone other than a superintendent of schools. He is not legally, can't marry you.
Let's get back to diplomas. If we don't, if we don't change the policy, what happens?
Well, I have no intentions of changing the policy in general. The policy, as it reads today, when I consulted with the attorney, his answer to me was, I can have the building principal hand out the diplomas. This was a compromise, because we had a board member who wasn't happy with it. That was my advice from the attorney. After his advice, like I said, I went to Mr. Brown, I went to you, I went to the superintendent. The policy, as it reads today, by the interpretation of the board attorney, is that I can authorize the building principal to physically hand out that. His take is, I award the diplomas by signing them, I read the certification at graduation. That is the board president's awarding of the diplomas. The physical handing out, it doesn't speak to it at all.
And I also spoke to the attorney at the New Jersey School Boards Association, who agrees that distribution and awarding are both synonymous terms, and that was the intent when the policy was written. And this is canned language from the New Jersey School Boards Association.
And I'm sure if we ask four more lawyers, we'll get four more answers.
Needless to say, I think the board needs to give direction, both with regard to the policy and with regard to who's going to get out diplomas on Thursday night.
That's my question, what are we doing Thursday night? Designate who they want to hand out the diplomas? Remind us of what's on the motion.
The motion, I have a motion to withdraw policy number one and refer to the Policy Committee.
Okay, my question I have, before we vote, is that if we vote not to change the policy, what happens Thursday night? That's what I'm asking.
Can I be like the second question?
Then I think the board, the board would need to, I think, give clear direction, because I believe with the language as it is in policy right now, Mrs. Backo would still go ahead and appoint the high school principal.
So our vote that we do now is irrelevant, right?
I think we need good, sound policy either way. So I think the Policy Committee, at a minimum, needs to clarify the language between award and distribute, and then decide what direction we wish to take this for the long term.
What about past practice?
Past practice would certainly tend to establish a trend, sixty-nine years. We just spent a half hour talking about the definition of award at the end of the end.
Motion made, the second one.
Make the roll call.
Refer to the committee.
Is everyone is clear? You're voting right now on motion to withdraw policy number one and refer to the Policy Committee.
We're withdrawing the policy that's in the agenda now.
You're withdrawing the policy and referring it to the Policy Committee.
Got you.
Mr. Backo?
No.
Mr. Bishak?
No.
Mrs. Bruno Riccullio?
Yes.
Mr. Sayak?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBento?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
No.
Mr. Mackinon?
Please come down with me. Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
And Mrs. Backo?
No.
Motion passes to withdraw the policy on the agenda.
Okay, now I have a question, what are we doing Thursday night? Madam President.
Mr. Brown will be distributing the diplomas.
I make a motion to authorize the board vice president to distribute diplomas to the class of two thousand and eleven. And if he is unable or unwilling to do so, then he doesn't need another member of the Board of Education to uphold this seventieth annual commencement tradition.
That motion is in direct conflict with the current policy.
You said award could go either way, so I'm giving meaning to the award, to say that it will be distributed.
Right, but the policy says the board president awards, not the board, the vice president.
Then that's fine, I'll make a motion to appoint the board vice, the board president to award diplomas, to distribute diplomas by means of physical transference of possession onstage from the board president to each individual graduate on Thursday, to uphold a seventy-year tradition of this school tradition. I'm giving distribute, because I want to make sure the language is clear and there's no...
So you're amending the policy?
I'm not amending any, I'm setting direction for Thursday night. I'm offering a motion to set direction for Thursday night, so it's clear to everyone who will be distributing diplomas.
And what's your motion, to have the president?
To have the president.
Against her will.
Well, if she does not wish to, she can certainly delegate to you. I'm certain there's a board member who will volunteer.
What is the exact wording right now? Do we have the exact wording of what the policy is?
Award.
Award. So, that's the board president?
Not distributed.
The president of the Board of Education shall award diplomas, that's the way it reads right now?
I don't have the exact, I sent it out, I don't have the, but that, it's a, the word, distribute and award was changed. There's a couple of other words.
Because it says, or his or her designate, is that added in? That's the part that was added in? Or was that in before? Like, I'm curious exactly, because if we're changing the policy, we already said we want to refer it to the Policy Committee. Now, I know, we pulled this off and said, we want to refer it to the Policy Committee.
Your current policy stands as agreed, unfortunately, we don't have it in front of us.
Oh wait, maybe I do.
If somebody has it, I don't have it with me.
It's policy fifty-one twenty-seven.
Did anyone get on the iGOD?
Oh, yeah. It's on the portal.
No, she's looking for it.
Policy should be on our...
Well, I sent it to you as an email.
We figured it's the one.
Yeah, I sent it to you on the email.
It was, it was an email, I thought, you know, I...
And I had it in the box, I had the words, and I can print.
I don't remember what the exact wording is. It was, it was sent out, it was the words were passed out.
Maybe five words.
Yeah, there was only a couple of words changed.
Well, there's five of those at the board. We just have the font fifty-one twenty-seven.
That's it.
Scroll on down, Sandy.
That's it.
Sandy, scroll down.
Put it at the top, fifty-one twenty-seven. Just put it up on the top, it'll find you.
Do a fine.
Five, one, two, seven. That's it.
Try that.
Hit the, hit the... Keep going, keep going. Keep going.
She's close.
Keep going. There you go. Slide it down, it's in that last paragraph there. Slide it down. There it is, right there. Board of Education. See what it says?
Says the board president, the board of education, and/or another designated member of the board...
Sandy, you don't need to enlarge it.
Another designated member of the board shall award the diplomas. Board members and former board members shall be afforded the opportunity to award diplomas to members of the immediate, yeah. So we're arguing about what the word award means.
Correct.
That's why we changed the word.
That was the whole point of it.
But the only other designate is a board member.
The only other designate is a board member.
The issue was, does the board president have to award?
But it doesn't, the other issue was, like Phyllis and I talked about, what is the word award mean? Do you get up, when you say, this class has met all the requirements, that's another picture. I mean, it's a lot of semantics. But the bottom line is, give us some direction, I need to tell what Mr. Brown wants to do.
I don't understand, so it says, and/or another designated member of the board.
Yeah, I mean, anybody could do it.
It means somebody on the board.
Any member.
Any member.
Any member. Phyllis could say, and/or means somebody who's...
Or everybody.
Or everybody.
So Phyllis...
Well, everybody's given a chance.
Any, doesn't matter.
Well, we can take turns, but I think it's kind of like a circus.
They actually do that.
And many boards respond to that, they do that.
They do that.
Quite a few boards do that. Direction.
Okay.
Mr. Sayak, be a motion.
What's your motion?
Well, we, his motion...
I don't know if the motion can actually carry, because you have a board policy that dictates how you must follow it. So even if he passes a motion at this point...
There was no second anyway.
But I think the clarification is, what does award mean?
No, let's just decide, what do we want to do? Does Phyllis want to hand it out? And if not, does she want to designate somebody like a vice president or any other board member to do that?
No, this wasn't about me. I wanted to ask the building principal to do it, because I just thought he had the connection to the students. It wasn't about the board.
Phyllis, I can appreciate that, I want to let you know that.
I mean, that wasn't about me choosing another board member, or me doing it or not doing it. It was all about that I just felt the building principal was the appropriate form person to do it.
Why aren't you not concentrating on...
Hold on, hold on, just hold on. That's what it was about, it's not a question. It wasn't about whether I wanted to stand out, who handles. That's not what this issue was about. That's why I read the policy, I called the attorney, and asked him if it was okay, if the building principal would do it. The building principal said yes. I spoke to the vice president, he said okay, and I spoke to the superintendent. And then I sent an email out to the board. I got one objection.
Well, we were told not to respond, which is right.
Right, I said, please call me, please speak to me if you have an issue. And only one board member said that that issue...
Now, let me clarify that, the question you asked was very simple, do you object to Mr. Brown handing out the diplomas at graduation?
Yes, that's correct.
And I said, no.
No.
And more than many Boards respond to that, but they do that.
They do that. Quite a few Boards do that. Direction.
Does I have a motion?
What's your motion?
Well, we, his motion...
I don't know if the motion can actually carry because you have a Board policy that dictates how you must follow it. So even if he passes a motion at this point...
There was no second anyway.
But I think the clarification is what does award mean?
No, let's just decide, what is, what do we want to do? Does Phyllis want to hand it out? And if not, does she want to designate somebody like the Vice President or any other Board member to do that?
No, it, this wasn't about me. I wanted to ask the building principal to do it because I just thought he had the connection to the students. It wasn't about the Board.
Phyllis, I can appreciate that. I want to let you know that.
I mean, that wasn't, wasn't about, about me choosing another Board member or me doing it or not doing it. It was, it was all about that I just felt the building principal was the appropriate form person to do it.
Why don't you not concentrate on...
Hold on, hold on. That's what it was about. It's not a question. It wasn't about whether I wanted to stand out who handles. That's what, not what this issue was about. That's why I read the policy. I called the attorney and asked him if it was okay, if the building principal would do it. The building principal said yes. I spoke to the Vice President. He said okay. And I spoke to the superintendent. And then I sent an email out to the Board. I got one objection.
We were told not to respond, which is right.
Right, I said, please call me. Please speak to me if you have an issue. And only one Board member said that that issue...
Let me clarify that the question, the question you asked was very simple. Do you object to Mr. Brown handing out the diplomas at graduation?
Yes, that's correct.
And I said no.
No.
You didn't talk about changing policy. Come here, I just...
Right, and I had no intention to change the policy.
It was a simple question.
Right, it was a simple question because as far as I was concerned from the attorney, the way the policy was written, the building principal was permitted to hand them out. There was never a thought in my mind to change the policy.
Can I suggest something? If this was my first Board of Ed meeting, might, been my last. Let me just suggest. Can we continue with the tradition this year? And then we have a whole year to discuss what we want to do for the next year since we're going to be doing this in less than forty-eight hours.
No, because it wasn't less than forty-eight hours. I mean, I started this process after I was elected. I mean, it wasn't like I started it tonight. You know, it wasn't, I couldn't have started it before the reorganization meeting. I mean, I, I wasn't authorized to do so. I mean, I did it as soon as I could.
Okay, let me just say, we have nine adults at this table. Ladies and gentlemen, let's make a decision. And let's press on with the agenda.
Well, according to policy, if we can't make a decision, Phyllis needs to make a decision.
All I was going to say, folks, is stay away from the word award. It just clearly states the President of the Board of Education and/or another designated member of the Board.
But no, we can't stay away from the award because that's how it's written. That's how the policy is written.
It's indicating only yourself or someone else of the Board shall perform the task.
Right, no. Well, it should perform the task of awarding, not distributing. That's how I got stuck with the attorney in the first place.
I understand that, but your policy doesn't have those other words. And you make a rather circular...
Right, so in other words, if someone else wanted to read it, you know, I designate that these are certified, whatever, anybody can do it. I mean, that's how I read the policy.
I just look at it like past practice.
And then we... Let me, let, let's, let's do this another way, okay? So we can move forward and then move on because I really don't want to get caught in this all night. It's already turned into bigger than I thought it would be. I thought this would be something very simple. How about if I ask a simple question and I call the Board? Do you have an issue with the building principal handing out the diplomas? Physically handing them out? Mr. Bishada?
No. I do not have an issue with it.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Mrs. Esposito?
No.
Mr. Mackinon? Do you have a problem with the building principal handing out the diplomas? Yes or no?
No, I don't.
No, this is yes or no. Mr. Sayah?
Was that a complete answer or...?
Yes, this is a yes or no question because we're not moving forward here. I, I mean, we're just...
Well, no, I think we had more to say, so I'm...
So are you, are you abstaining?
I was told, I was done.
Yes or no?
The question you asked...
Well, we'll never get to the next person. Yes or no?
Mike, you're going to follow the policy?
I'll say what I want to say. You asked me a question, and this is the same question you asked me when you called me on the phone.
Right.
Do I have a problem with the principal, Jim Brown, handing out the diplomas?
Right, instead of...
Answer's still no. I don't have a problem. I have a problem with this whole process and how we got to, you would ask me that question.
Right, right, I, I get that. So you don't have a problem with it?
It's a sixty-nine-year tradition. Yes, I have a problem changing it.
I anticipated.
Mrs. DePinto, we, we... I would rather a Board number two with Mr. Brown.
Oh, yeah.
So is that a yes or a no?
It's a me. I think it's a compromise is what it's called.
Which is what I had suggested.
Mr. Brown?
I have no problem. Anybody tally it up?
Well, Mike, I'm not positive where you are. You're, you're, you, you don't have a problem with Mr. Brown?
No, the building principal. He says, hey, Mr. Mackinon, I'd like to hand out the diplomas.
Well, he didn't say that.
No, I don't have a problem with Mr. Brown building.
Let me ask the question the other way. You're okay with just tossing a sixty-nine-year tradition out the window without careful deliberation?
I'll go back to my initial comment. That's why I'm torn with it.
Right, so... I would be fine with a compromise of having the Board award the diploma and Mr. Brown shaking the hand right next to the Board member. I, I don't see an issue with that.
So you want Mr. Brown to shake hands and the Board hand a piece of paper?
Correct.
I guess I could say Mr. Brown will work that out.
Oh, great, so we have a compromise. Somebody now has to...
Well, no, Mr. Brown, I think, was handling that side.
If he was handing out the diplomas already, by the way, somebody's reading the names.
Right, he was, he was working on, he, he has a plan for how he wanted to do it.
Just tell me what you want to add.
All right, Mr. Bishada just asked me to look up the word award.
Oh, wait, sorry. Does anybody, I'm willing to make that, does anybody have a problem if I stand with Mr. Brown and he shakes the hands of the students and I give whatever?
And you give out the paper to the diploma?
No problem.
Is that right, Phyllis? And then you give out to the diploma?
Right, and he'll stand with me and shake everyone's hand. So we do it together.
So they're still Board Member President with the...
I will still be standing there with Mr. Brown while he hands everybody's hand. Mr. Bishada?
I have no problem with that.
That's yes. Whatever Kevin wants. No, not right now. Yes. You're okay with it? Mrs. Trapp?
Yes, I'm okay with it. I'm hoping that you're going to hand out the diploma now, Phyllis. That you're not just going to stand next to him.
Yes, that's, that was what I understood.
I'm all-handed and he will shake their hands.
That's wonderful.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Samantha? Mr. Mackinon?
Yes, please.
Are you torn? Can you make it? Are you okay with this?
I like how it lies.
Mr. Sayah?
I am okay with that as long as the Board distributes the diplomas.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, please.
You forgot Mrs. DePinto.
Well, it was her suggestion. She's, we started with her, but you can answer. I'm happy to be next. I mean, that was, we started with her.
Okay, are there any other questions, Tom? Any other questions on that, Paul?
You got more?
Mr. Mackinon wants to know if he can make a motion to return. Who do you think?
We're not hearing that. I haven't seen the prior report yet.
That's what I think.
All right, we're on curriculum. Page fifteen. Now, there's a couple of curriculums that are...
Wait, before we move on, I will call Mr. Brown and work out the details, okay?
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. But I'm not really sure what's happening.
And colleagues, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as curriculum, Dr. Alphano?
And I'm not marrying you, Mr. Sayah.
Dr. Alphano, these two curriculums I reviewed, Mr., it sounds like they're excellent. Now, these, these are going to be elective science courses, obviously, that are taken in conjunction or selected and used by themselves.
They're, they're both, they're semester courses.
They're semester courses.
You can't, the student can't take one or the other, or they can take both.
Now, the teacher that wrote these curriculums, they also selected the texts for support because there's some excellent books associated with this. Now, the books that were singled out as one copy, I assume those are references to the course and not for students or... Because they identified texts that are a single copy and then those are multiple.
Right, right. There are ones that are used as resources.
Excellent. NT Technology is like an interesting...
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon.
No problem. I'm glad to talk about curriculum.
I was going to say, I just said this is the form. Those are all by resolutions on pages fifteen and sixteen, seventeen, all the way up to eighteen. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to G. Grade six orientation, let's not talk about this, is August twenty-fourth. I can wait for that the whole summer. Any questions with G? With none, moving to H. These are transportation waivers and transportation routes. And then on page twenty, there was a few field trips, summer enrichment program, field trips, and school bus emergency evacuation drills according to New Jersey Administrative Code, which we're kind of adopted. Moving to the addendum, which is at the beginning of the agenda, I can move it over. Going back to finance, you have number twenty-seven, which is an approval of replacement of an eighth-grade student. This is what we discussed at the last meeting with the Board Hearing. The Johnson Communications, approved a contract with them, which we've had on the law. Another contract for Garden State Roofing Instruction from twenty-four, nine to twenty-eight, which we got the three quotes. Bigland Communications, replacement of intercom system at the middle school, it's about time. Establish, because it didn't work when I was there. That was nine years ago. Establishment of position on behavioralist, once again, that's moving one place to another on the control roster. Oh, that's actually a new, because we're not, it's not a consultant. That's right, we're actually saving money by doing that. Establishment of position resource from center, that is on the control system. Any questions with the addendum B?
I have a question. And I'm just going to, some of this other stuff I understand, but I guess my question is for the addendum in general and the sheer length of the addendum. And how much of this could have been known when the agenda was handed out the first time?
Phyllis, this, this agenda is a monster. You have to understand, we're, we're moving people all over the place and it's very, very difficult.
I understand that, but I mean, we're looking at things like awarding contracts to roofs, another contract for twenty-nine thousand, establishing a position of the year. I mean, some of these things we didn't know on Friday.
I can comment on the Johnson Communication. That email was sent to me on Friday. I was out of the seminar. The other two were when Dennis got back into the district on, he left them for me on Friday. I got them Monday and put them on the agenda. He was working to get the quotes on both of those items together. So both of those things were things that were not available on Friday. And thirty-one and thirty-two is really...
Were based on today's review of personnel, where we're...
Right, that's personnel. We're just trying to clean up personnel now. We have so many things floating out there right now and we're trying to get them. I mean, we, we were doing the report right up to the last minute.
A lot of this is resulting in fact, there are two meetings come up. So we're more pressed for suspens...
Really trying to, the, the end of the year, it's always been, I apologize, but we're really trying to get this all done. And a lot of this is personnel. And, you know, right at this point, right now, it's, it's very hard collecting everything and putting everything together. Plus, you've got to remember, you have, we're doing two years now. We're doing ten, eleven, eleven, twelve. So yes, this was a large addendum. I apologize, but we're trying to get everything done in this, in this meeting. Moving to C, personnel non-certified. Those are just additional bus aides, resignations of a cafeteria aide and a extended school year. Again, we, this is constantly a motion to the extended school year, who's going to work and who's not. So I think we're trying to clean that up as well. Moving to D, certify. Again, we just, we have that, so I guess we did, it's on two different pages. So we, we caught it later on, so the August thirty-first. So you can see that we actually didn't catch this one before. So that's, that's what's happening. People are moving around and they're saying, no, I'm, you know, I'm leaving June thirtieth and they come to us at the last minute and say, no, I need them till August thirty-first. And, and, and it's just, we're trying to get it done. Some of the, then there's Mr. Roth that I can tell you right to the last minute, there was a question about his status on whether or not he was going to be MA or MA plus thirty. So we, we were waiting for something from the State Department that said he's either MA or MA plus thirty, and they finally got to us. Child rearing leave is, is right there. I know we waited to the very end on the fourth page of the addendum to try to get the curriculum together for next year. And I know Marilyn and I were working for that right up to the end. These replacement teachers, once again, is the ten, eleven. So we're cleaning this up, trying to clean up and making sure that everybody's on the correct step. And a lot of these people came in during the course of the school year. So subsequently, their retro checks were unusually, unusual because this was, we wanted to make sure it was accurate. Guidance councils, I can tell you, we were talking to Mr. Cola today at ten o'clock in the morning trying to get this stuff. And if we don't put it on the addendum now, they're not going to work. Number nineteen is an extended school year program again. Once again, we're right to the very end, summer school. And number twenty is a transfer of Nicole Brills because again, we're going to the rosters and we're trying to clean up the rosters and moving people around right at the end. I do have one last, actually a couple, I have an addition to this, which is number twenty-one. If I can read the attorney's handwriting. The Board of Education is requesting to approve upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the appointment of Mr. Edward Agalas as Director of Curriculum Instructive Effect of nine, one, eleven, subject to negotiations of the two thousand eleven, twelve salary guides, salary guides. Moving to policy that was removed anyways, that no longer exists. So that's withdrawn. F curriculum is the last of the guides that we, we've got to put on, that should have been put on at the beginning. That was our mistake. Two and three are self-explanatory. Number four is an addition in curriculum, and this is, I want to thank the Board, actually this goes with curriculum number four. I want to thank the Board once again. Another discipline hearing, and this is required, the Board of Education is requesting to approve the findings of the Student Discipline Committee with respect to a several memorial of national history as a result of the hearing which took place on June twentieth, today, two thousand eleven. That concludes my report.
A question. You said we're approving the findings of the Student Discipline Committee?
Yes, yes.
What does that mean, approve findings?
In other words, whatever the disposition was, and I can't get into that.
I mean, so we're approving the disposition?
Oh, yeah, you're, yes, the findings and the disposition, but obviously you can't put that forth. We've done that three months in a row.
It's the common language to use to, to document the disciplinary hearing.
Basically, that's what the attorneys have given us.
I'll be voting no on number twenty-one, the addition. For section, I'm not sure.
Personal certified.
Personal certified.
Personal certified, probably.
It was the addition, the red one.
Number twenty-one, no? Okay.
And I do have another correction, but it's not actually in your report. This is the first time I, I've seen it listed like this, the committee listing. I want to change the way we do that. Because it's after, under, where it says committee and it says pick, I was advised we, that's not really a committee. We need to change that to delegates. Delegates to pick committee.
I spoke, Mrs. Backo, by our bylaws, a committee can't have less than three people, but if they are delegates to pick, then four implies.
And based on the pick policy, although we've always had a pick committee, it's not really a pick committee.[1565.82]
Yes.
No. Wait a minute. If there's three people on it, then it's a committee?
Right, and we had spoken about that, that we thought maybe we leave the third person as a rotating person, but since it's listed this way, and as the Senator said, the pick policy doesn't account for a pick committee.
Correct.
So even though we've always had a committee, it would never correct.
Okay.
So it's not a committee, they're delegates.
Right.
It's like a water handle.
Right, right. We're back to the-
To which we're enroiled to a delegate.
It's another word.
Gotcha.
Okay. I'd like to open- does anybody else have any comments before I went into the public? I'd like to open the public portion for agenda items only. Has anybody wished to speak?
Good evening. I guess it's quite- you know who I am, Lucy Brown, our teacher at the high school. I'm trying to understand why, as an elected official, who controls just about everything that affects the children of this district, you feel you don't want to hand out the diplomas?
It wasn't a matter of what. It was just a matter that I felt we were distant from the students, and I thought that the building principal had a closer connection to the students. It wasn't about what I wanted or did not want to do. It was just that I felt it would be nice if the building principal-
Can I ask what Mr. Brown's response was? I know he loves to read those names. He works on that for a long time.
Well, it's not an easy task, reading the names. You can ask Mr. Brown. I wouldn't have a problem with that. He wasn't objectionable to that. I know it's a tradition, and I know people are quite- I know change is tough.
Yeah, but I think the fact that you feel that you're disconnected, I find that disturbing. I don't think you're disconnected. I think you are-
Well, personally, we are.
You are an officer, you are all elected officials, and we're trying to teach our children to learn about life. And meeting elected officials and getting their diploma from a board member, I think, is a life lesson.
And I think if you ask most people, they probably wouldn't even remember.
Well, I disagree, but I just-
We could agree to disagree.
Okay.
A motion to approve the superintendent's report?
Some move. Second.
Mr. Bauck.
I need to abstain on item B, number eight.
I believe I have that already. Yes.
D, number thirteen.
B, number thirteen, you're abstaining?
Yes. Then on attachment A, page three, pronounce D abstained.
I have that.
Attachment A, page five, Iker abstained?
Got that.
Attachment eight, page six, pronounce D abstained?
Got that.
And no on item number twenty-one. You'll get that.
I don't remember twenty.
Yes, I'll know.
Yes, but I'll be voting no on number twenty-one, a personnel certified, D section.
Mrs. Hurn, number two.
Yes, except for the addendum, section D, number twenty-one, I think that we should go outside and look for more candidates.
Mr. Syak.
Yes, with the exception of the item I abstained on an hour and forty-five minutes ago.
Mrs. DePizdo.
Yes.
Mrs. Esquizito.
Yes.
Mr. McEnroe.
Yes, with the exception.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes, with the exception of-
Thank you.
Every new pass is correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Except Bob.
Next. I did just want to make a comment for those people that weren't involved. I did talk to everyone that was on the committee after speaking to the superintendent. There seems to be no need for reord committee, so that was taken off. So I did speak to the people that were on the committee personally. Delegates of New Jersey School Board.
I said a lot, so the only thing I want to point out is that the work that we're doing with the NCLB that I mentioned last week is work on the, what's his name, the Department of- Arnie Duncan did meet with NSBA last week, and we are working towards some regulatory relief for No Shot Left Behind. We're not sure yet, he's being a little vague in terms of what type of regulatory relief is going to be offered, but he is in the- of the mind of compromising and coming up with some regulatory relief. Thanks.
Okay. Discussion. This high school graduation on here is not about diplomas. This is about vocation, and this is something Vinnie and I had spoke about, and we decided to start on next year's graduation, so we're not doing anything at the eleventh hour. Sometime months ago, the Board had voted, and I think by majority at least, I'm not sure the exact vote, to designate whatever the student result was of a survey, and that would be how we were going to hold graduation. The survey came back that the students wanted to stay on the grounds, rain or shine, and have graduation here. However, there has been some other things that have come to light, so I think we need to revisit this and make a decision and give some direction. I know, and I still get the complaints, I'm sure, just like everybody else does, that it's hot in the gym, and it's hot outside, and, you know, and we only get two tickets in the gym. So what I really would like to know from the Board, does the Board wish to revisit the faith fellowship issue? Is that off the table? Do we want to do another survey of next year's class and try again? I just think that right now, the administration, I think Dennis Pendley on open a video, we need to start thinking about what we want to do. Is the Board objectionable at this point, based on the heat and the complaints that I'm sure most of us have received, willing to look in to going to- to just have somebody research the faith fellowship idea? Does anybody wish to do it?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
Mr. Syak brought up a point about tradition. It'll be forty-four years, the day of this coming week, that I walked on that field to get my diploma, and I think the tradition should stay here at the high school with the field. And if we have to, we can make the alternative to use the gymnasium.
Mr. Bishada, who handed you that for formal forty-four years?
I'm not sure if it was Dr. Parnell or Mr. Dill.
Good answer. I thought I could just leave.
Actually, it was Mr. Kunsmit for your information. I just-
I thought he was the superintendent.
That was before your time, Mr. McEnroe.
Way before my time.
Years. You were a little, you know what.
Yep. Just a thought. Let me suggest my graduation, what some districts do, since we have a new auditorium that has nice seats, we increased the capacity, and it's air-conditioned. What some school districts do, and I know, you know, this is may be unsettling to some, is that you have it in the auditorium, but you break it up. You do H through M first, and then you do N through the rest of the alphabet, S. Everybody gets a seat, everybody gets a seat, it's in air-conditioned. That's what a lot of school districts do as a rein alternative. So it solves the problem of everybody getting a seat, you're in a climate-controlled environment, and you're still on school grounds.
But then all the students won't have a seat to watch the other students. Is what you're saying, only A through N to watch each other?
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I mean, that's an option in some districts.
Okay. That's an option.
And it's just, that takes the least cost to check the tradition.
Check the tradition.
I don't have a problem going off-campus. I think a lot of schools do it everywhere.
Do you have a problem going off for either rain or shine?
I don't know, I don't have a problem.
Please, sir.
I want to stay on-campus, especially because that's what the students have pretty much voiced. This year they haven't, I presume that subsequent years they will as well.
Right. I do think that the, you know, I mean, I need to discuss it at parent meetings of your call, but I do believe wasn't the survey to go off or not off. I don't think it designated rain or shine.
Rain or shine, right. And I don't like the idea of doing it in a religious- no, no, splitting the alphabet or doing- or doing it in a religious environment.
Because, okay.
Yeah, because the offensiveness to three people, but, well, who would I, a small amount of people.
I'm not going there to pray, I'm just going there to have a ceremony.
I would say keep it here. You want to keep it here, rain or shine? Mr. McEnroe? Other than the A through N, would you want to stay here?
Yeah, I think that that's, I don't mind the heat in the gym, I'd rather have those places.
Rain or shine, you want to stay here? Okay. Mr. Syak?
I would like to stay here, I should probably guess with the whole tradition thing. I would like to explore Mrs. Trapp's idea a little further about the possible portable air conditioners. I don't know if it's feasible or not, but I'd like to dig into that a little further. The main concern I have with the faith fellowship, maybe we should check with our law firm, but I'm pretty sure that was just recently even in New Jersey school district-
Neptun.
I thought it was Neptun, that had an issue with holding a ceremony in a religious institution.
The boy cave, that's what happened.
Well, that, well, next.
I really don't want to keep it added here if the students don't want to go in.
Okay.
I have no problem moving it off-campus.
Okay. All right, since the majority includes, the majority would stay here, but let's visit, does the Board wish to entertain air conditioning in the gym if it's inside?
Which just means the air conditioning, it for those two days, middle and high school graduation.
Two days, we'd be paying for an air conditioner inside.
Well, if I could, not just two days.
Wait a minute, just wait a minute. So, this is why we don't get through. The air conditioner issue did come to light recently. There was a cost involved in it, so it will just put an estimate at eight thousand dollars, approximately. We don't know what it would be next year. If we rented it, we pay the money whether we use it or we don't. There is another alternative, and it could be worked out maybe through the buildings and grounds to try to chill the room some other way.
Impossible.
Well, no, through, the Buildings and Grounds Committee last year, it was mixed to put a new air conditioner in the media center, from what I understand, but I'm sure it's going back out the table for this year's budget, whether it gets cut or not. So maybe there could be another mechanism. But I guess the question here, do we want to entertain the expense of air conditioning in the gym whether we use it or not?
Air conditioning for graduation.
For the two-day study, just for the two days.
And not to exceed, say, ten thousand dollars, because the problem was that the price was much higher, and then at the last minute, this company seems to, I guess they need the business, so they came in lower. So if we were to give a top dollar amount on it, not to exceed, I think that's a good idea.
If I could, instead of put the dollar amount, why don't you just agree or not-
I'm not looking for a vote tonight, I'm looking for a direction.
No, but I guess for the direction, simply, do you want to explore it or not? When the dollars come back, you'll decide at that point.
Right, then we could do it. I just want a direction if people should go explore the, explore it that you're willing to spend some sum of money to do.
That's true.
Okay. Mr. Bishada, do you want to pay for an air conditioner?
No.
I have no problem with it.
Okay.
Me paying for it? Yeah.
Okay, we know, I'm all for bringing a air conditioner in.
I think it's a lot of money, ten thousand dollars. I'm going to say no on that.
Okay.
Yes, Madam President.
Would you like to pay for or explore the-
Absolutely, positively not. Spend eight, ten thousand dollars for an air conditioner you may not use for an hour. I have a bigger problem in the gym.
Wait, wait, it's for like four hours or six hours. It's for both middle school and high school.
Oh, please, it's with- my issue in the auditorium, the last two times we did it there, was not the heat, it was the sound.
Well, we took care of it. That's been, that's been-
My understanding is that's removed.
That's been removed, so this is just about-
Absolutely not.
No. Mr. Syak.
I would be interested in looking at the portable air conditioner, just as a question, because I really don't know, how much would it cost to permanently air condition gymnasium?
I have no idea.
I would bet it's-
I mean, I don't know if we're talking four hundred thousand dollars or-
I have no idea.
Thirty thousand dollars.
No idea.
Mr. Syak.
Well, the people who don't want to pay ten probably don't want to pay four hundred.
Yeah, but I think if we're talking like forty thousand over four years of ten, should you pay it off? That's the only reason I'm asking. If you're talking four hundred thousand, we'll-
Yeah, I don't think that would be necessary.
But you have to pay for this portable air conditioner whether you have it outside or you have it-
Correct, right, correct. No. No.
I agree with Kevin on this one. I mean, the permanent solution is cheap enough, we can order the permanent solution.
Okay, but I just want to look at the temporary solution first, so I can see if we can give direction if it's worth researching.
No.
Okay.
Clear, direction received.
The direction was no. Does the Board wish the Buildings and Grounds Committee maybe to research a permanent air conditioning solution and include it as in the budget discussions? Do we wish to entertain that?
We'll do the research on it and come back with the cost estimate.
I agree with Bishada. Allow the Buildings and Grounds Committee to put together the real priorities of the district for next year.
Well, that's what we have to do. We have to sit down and discuss items.
Okay. So do we feel we have direction for next year's graduations ahead of time?
All set.
Yes. We don't have an incident like last year where people with these impressed air horns were disrupting the ceremony for all the other people.
Okay, maybe we can check them at the door, can we see if they're walking with them?
I don't know the procedure for graduations.
Isn't this something you can see? When they walk in, are they hiding them?
No, they're visible, they're walking in their hands, and you can see exactly what they're doing.
Well, you're talking for indoors or for both?
Both.
Only indoors, it was. Okay. The solar project is a continuation from the last meeting. Okay. This has time constraints on it, which is why it's here again. The Board was sent photos of what the fourteen solar panels would look like. This is based on the conversation we had at the last meeting with the president of the county, and they were looking to see if we were interested. I did speak to Vinnie about it, and I did run into the freeholder that's proposing this, and he had told me that there was a July deadline for us to make a decision on whether we wanted to go on board with the county or not. After I talked to Vinnie about it, I think we need to make a decision whether we want to look into this county and go ahead with it, because if we do, we need to do it right away. And what we did talk about, I know we're waiting for a referendum for the other solar project, and I guess my take is how long do we want to wait? Do we think we're getting the money from the state? And I brought, there was an article in the newspaper this week about solar power, and I looked at it, and assuming it's correct, and I didn't verify it was correct, but it had said that the S-Rex had sold for more than six hundred in credit in the last two years, but now it's down to four seventy. And when I looked at our financial analysis for our solar thing, when we were looking at the S-Rex, the analysis includes a price higher than four seventy. Mr. DeAndre, we talked about it, the solar panels that the county is proposing can be put on roofs. It doesn't have to be on a field or a parking lot. So we do have roofs that we can put it on, correct, that are new, that meet the like expectancy. So I guess what we need is direction from the Board. Do you want to entertain going in with the county to maybe, people didn't seem to want to put it on a field or a parking lot without, affairs that went on the last meeting? So do we want to look into maybe the roofs, split it, and if we get the money from the state, if we ever get the money from the state, to look at the other roofs? So because if we do, we need someone to come in, present it to us, and we have to make a decision in a short timeframe.
Well, I think you also have to keep in mind, under the county, it's a purchase-power agreement where you do not own them, someone else owns them, you're just getting electricity at a cheaper rate. So you have to also, because you did discuss that when we brought in the presentation, so you also have to keep that in mind. Currently, you're looking to purchase, under the county approval, you're looking to do a purchase-power agreement. You do not own them, someone else owns them, you're just paying cheaper electricity. I can tell you, you probably would be able to do all its, all its school, a good portion of the high school, UES, probably those, if I remember correctly, those are the only three roofs that could sustain putting solar panel on them at this point in time. Wilson School roof is new, but that was a very small system. Truman needed a new roof. Eisenhower needed a new roof. Solover needed a new roof. And the middle school, Franklin Tower, and the middle school, real grand new roofs.
Can you benefit from S-Rex, is it a power share, a power use?
No, that's, the benefit goes to the contractor. What the contractor benefits under the purchase-power agreement is they get a federal tax credit, a thirty percent federal tax credit for providing solar energy. They sell off their S-Rex, and Phyllis is correct, the S-Rex numbers have been declining because so many people now are producing solar power, so the commodity is down because now there are more people out there.
We've been talking about this, Madam President, for the last year.
And we just keep waiting.
Time to do this. You know, you talk about faith fellowship, they have a plan with the borough, they're going to do their whole block on with this canopy type of solar. So this is the way to go. The longer we wait, the less savings this group is going to realize.
Do we want to try and move ahead and not move ahead with the referendum portion of the buildings that have sustainable roofs that we can put the solar panels on?
Well-
And use those as a purchase-power agreement only?
Well, right, but, I mean, sitting and waiting for the state anyway, it doesn't matter, because we can't do it on those roofs anyway.
Well, that's what I'm saying, do we want to look at those three or four buildings that we can actually put solar panels on and explore the opportunity to do it as a purchase-power agreement? If we don't own it, we just pay a cheaper electrical rate, and they own it, they-
And they do the maintenance as far as, right? I mean, they take care of everything, so that was how I understood it.
Yeah.
Do you have that deadline date? Did you get that?
No, I didn't.
Well, the deadline date I know is before our July meeting, so it would require us to have-
That was the county, but again, as we spoke, from the, the borough is doing their thing on their own, so the deadline is not as stringent as-
Right, but I think we keep missing the vote here. I think we need to either do or not. I, I mean, the county, there's, in my opinion, the county has a lot of towns going in on this. I would feel safer doing it as a big group than just going with, the borough hasn't formulated a plan yet, and the county is very good set.
I'd be more than happy to tell them to come and look at the current plans we have for the buildings that we know can sustain it, because the roof would be there with the warranty of the roofs. The UES is the only one, we may have to apply some type of special warranty extension because it's, it's maybe seven years old now. Actually, nine, because the roofs were on first, so we may have to apply for some type of special warranty for the UES. All its and the high school, a good portion, those three buildings are probably the only ones we could really look, look at and move ahead with the county, so I'm fine with that if that's the direction of the Board and put aside to the referendum portion for those three buildings.
Is there a share-power agreement if you go canopy to?
To purchase-power agreement, yes.
Still for canopy.
But did you, at the last meeting there, you said you were going to touch base with C and E. Have they built better facilities?
They received, I, I gave them the reports, they've been through, I have not heard back from them at this point in time.
Okay. So if we want to move forward, it's going to require us to schedule another meeting?
Well, I, I think the key is that if you're looking to move forward, allow me to get in touch with those individuals at the county and see what they need from us as far as the rooftop units that they're looking at. Because I had a different understanding there. Email basically said land, ground-mounted systems, so your, your information is different with the email, so if the board wants.
Right, and the freeholder would say he would be more than happy to come and speak to us. I, we got a letter from him, though, you emailed us a letter from him.
But that's what I'm saying, if the direction of the board is to scrap those three buildings as part of the referendum, I can start moving on that without the board having to really meet.
Right, I just don't want to miss the vote with this county proposal.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I, I would prefer to make that call tomorrow and get them moving with it, if that's the direction of the board for those three buildings that we know the roof is sustainable that we don't have to replace.
Is the board willing, I know people might have vacation plans, and we all meet and have another meeting before the July seventeenth or nineteenth, whatever it is?
When is, when is the actual date that we would have to have it?
It's earlier in July. I think, he, he didn't know off his head, he didn't have the numbers, but I was thinking maybe, like, he was thinking maybe closer to like the tenth. So I knew, I knew our meeting was after the deadline, so it would require us to meet and decide before.
Again, those, let me meet with him.
Right, I just want to make sure the board is available.
And we make the board together.
Depends on when I am going away the first week of July.
The first week.
I will be gone first two weeks of July.
I'm away, I'm in Boston for work the first week of July, fourth.
Why don't we get, why don't we get the date, will Syak, do we get?
Well, for those people that are going to be away, and a decision would have to be rendered by those that are left, are the people who are going to be away okay with pursuing the solar power? Are the roofs that are good, that, so they will not be included in the referendum if we ever get to that point?
I'm leaning toward it, but I do have questions, and I'd like to hear them presented. I don't know if I have enough information to make a sound judgment.
I know, I know, but you wouldn't be here if, if it comes during your vacation, that's likely.
Is everybody okay with moving forward?
I'll, I'll reach out to them tomorrow and see if we can get something.
Anything else for discussion?
I have one issue that I'd like to bring up for the nine of us to discuss, and that's possibly in the fall of rebuilding our baseball field over here. You know, getting the infield resodded and getting some of the dirt removed and making it more of a playable baseball field for our team and for home teams. Well, our baseball field is right out here, we have a million, two big change ball-purpose field, and the baseball field here, the infield, I think it's resodded maybe twelve or fifteen years ago, the infield, and I know J.K., and I believe Dr. Afano, both, if you looked at the dirt issue that I had mentioned, it's, it's pretty, it's outdated, it's more like a sandlot, in my terms of date.
The problem, the problem, Tom, is, and we don't have, we'd have to look at it, we'd have to get like Jake the Snake or somebody out here that we know.
Well, the thing is, it's done on a yearly basis by a professional landscaper to bring it to plain condition. I guess the key is, Tom, again, maybe bring it to the Buildings and Grounds Committee and see to what extent are we looking to refurbish.
Right, I. The only problem, Tom, excuse me, doing that, because I coach people, we have to be careful, because if you resod it, sometimes it runs into the season.
Well, I'm saying in the fall, you know, maybe something in the fall. The reason I'm, I'm bringing it up is because I want to online word with it to, and also the administration, you know, to understand, you know, what I've seen, you've been there, and, you know, if we could just to bring it up a little bit above what it is, you know, a lot above what it is, you know, it's just something to throw out for discussion.
I don't, as far as refurbishing it, they probably, and I can be wrong, I don't think they'll refurbish it in, in the winter before or the fall for the spring sport because of the winter. If they resod it and they do all that stuff, I don't think they'll do it. Unless you put, unless you turf it.
So when do they resod it?
Unless you turf it.
Usually they do it early in the spring.
Depends on the extent that you're looking to do. I mean, is refurbishing where you can just do cosmetic refurbishing, or are we talking complete removal and going down to plain surface where you start from the beginning? So again.
Well, no matter how we do it, it's going to be next year's budget, right?
Well, that's the other problem, I, it's not in the eleven, twelve budget either, so you would have to take money out of your eleven, twelve budget for, to allocate towards, because it was not a budgeted item at this point in time.
Okay, so why don't the Buildings and Grounds Committee research it again, please?
Well, I just wanted to bring it up to the board, so, you know, you're not blindsided on it.
What I'll do is, I'll say with J.K., I'll get J.K. involved and hopefully probably